Good evening. I want to call the City of Grand Rapids City Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 17th to order. I want to welcome all of you to our city commission meeting, and before we get started, I would like to remind everyone of our rules of conduct to ensure everyone who wants to speak has an opportunity to be heard without being interrupted. Tonight's a special scheduled city commission meeting for the purpose of taking comments on the upcoming fiscal year 2023 budget. This is an official city meeting with city business to be conducted. Those wishing to address the commission will have up to, will have one opportunity for public comment for up to three minutes each during the comment period. During public comment, we have procedures and expectations in place to allow everyone to be heard and feel safe in this environment. But I ask that you would adhere to the rules, specifically refraining from clapping and cheering and booing and cursing, name-calling, or making derogatory comments toward other community participants. We want to remind you that if anyone uses language, inappropriate language, or engages in threatening language disrupting the decorum of this meeting, the microphone will be cut off for the remainder of the time allotted. If there is continued disruptive actions or a breach of the peace, I will ask that you leave the meeting so we continue with city business to be conducted and to allow others who want to make public comment to be heard. This meeting is a lawful assembly of a governmental body, and disrupting the order of the meeting is committing a breach of the peace. If the disorderly conduct continues and if we need to take a recess, I'll clear however long that needs to be, or I will adjourn, and we will, that is, again, with the understanding that there's a desire to reestablish order and restore the meeting. I also want to take an opportunity to state that I recognize that many who will be speaking are speaking from a place of trauma. I'm asking my colleagues also to acknowledge those speaking on this matter perhaps are experiencing fear, anxiety, distrust, and pain, and I want you all to know that we are here to listen, and that I respect you, and would ask that you would respect us as well. At this time, I would like to ask for the roll call.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Sassi.
Present.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here. Colleagues, can I get a motion to excuse Mayor Bliss and Commissioner Moody on this evening?
So vote.
Support.
It's been moved and supported that both the mayor and Commissioner Moody are excused on this evening. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right. Motion carries. Before we jump right into public comment, I'm going to give our city manager an opportunity to provide some context and background with regards to this evening. City Manager?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners, for being here this evening, members of the public. What I'd like to do is to, before the public hearing period starts, to give an overview of a high level of some of the budget components, since these work sessions have taken place over several weeks and meetings and hours, I want to offer summation of some of the key elements in the proposed budget in which you will be hearing comment on this evening. So I would begin with offering a summary of the $597 million budget, which includes $163 million allocation from the general fund for the use of the strategic plan as our roadmap and a 2% reduction in the property tax mileage rate, with supplemental funding from federal funds from the American Recovery Act, using ARPA funds for about $32 million. This budget continues all essential services, and it is responsive to calls for public safety reform while increasing funding for public safety oversight and other community services. As you'll see in the overall funding plan of the net revenue, about 25% of our overall revenue is a result of income tax, and so having a vibrant economy helps to support the funding of local government in addition to property tax revenues, as well as other revenues from state and federal resources and charges for services and fees which you'll also hear tonight. This fiscal plan allows us to continue in the midst of the uncertainty during the pandemic, helping with our recovery. We are starting to see positive income tax trends, and we have strong leverage reserves that allows us to maintain our essential services. It is in line with our vision and values for our community to make sure that we become a community that's able to help people elevate the quality of their lives through excellent city services. You'll see the six strategic priorities for our strategic plan, of which the fiscal plan is organized around. This budget is responsive to the city's commission's focus on improving conditions for housing in the unhoused community, as well as continues the efforts of participatory budgeting, our focus on public safety reform, crime prevention and violence reduction, as well as climate change and climate adaptation with creating green spaces for our parks and park amenities, as well as continued effort of our future reimagining of our city through our community master plan, as well as redevelopment of key areas. Well, you'll note in this budget, we have continually increased our emphasis on equity, and since fiscal year 21, where $14 million in submissions was devoted to equity, you'll see this budget has over $36 million in funding devoted to equity efforts. I want to highlight a few areas related to our strategic plan. I'll begin with Safe Community Investments. The increase in funding for our Oversight and Office of Oversight and Public Accountability, almost five times from $400,000 to $2.5 million. That results in additional training for community inform and community engage training that will help with de-escalation, in which community members will design, co-design the training with our Oversight Office and co-experience it with members of law enforcement. You'll also see additional funding in the Oversight Office and the relocation of the body camera contract that will be managed by the Oversight Office, continuation of the Cure Violence Interruption Program with our partnership with the Urban League at $875,000, as well as funding to help with our engagement with immigrant and refugee communities. I had a meeting with members of that community earlier to increase our intentional outreach in ensuring that they're engaged in the work of local government. This budget also continues the work of the Clean Slate Expungement Program and the funding of the Know Your Rights Program. On the crime prevention side, we'll continue with over $400,000 in crime prevention programming, the continued funding of the SAFE Task Force at $100,000, and almost $2 million in the Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, and you'll see the funding for the Clean Slate Program as well. There's also funding for mental health co-response, our partnership with Network 180, our Public Health, Kent County Public Health, Kent County Public Health Authority, at $700,000, in which we will have trained mental and behavioral health specialists that will either co-respond or sole response to 911 calls in which the issues are primarily issues of mental and behavioral health. There's also additional training for police officers, as well as additional funding for the fire department, $100,000 for the Fire Cadet Program that will be intentional about diversifying the ranks of the fire department. We also continue the investment in the Third Ward Equity Fund, $750,000 is appropriated in this budget, will be appropriate in this budget, as well as continue the work of our new equity analysts due to grant funding and support that work, as well as the library's highlight of almost $84,000 for anti-racism training and diversity in auditing all of their collections to make sure that there is inclusion in the library collection. You'll also see additional funding for over $100,000 to engage micro-local business enterprises as we break down in sub parcel mowing contracts. I'd also like to highlight the continuation of funding of almost $6 million for the affordable housing supply in our housing fund, and additional federal and state funding for our housing and homeless, unhoused investments that includes the allocation of CDBG funding, home art funding, as well as emergency solution grants. You'll also see we continue to include affordability as we develop our master planning process. Other efforts I'd like to highlight, I mentioned earlier the $40 million investment for the community master plan, as well as other investments that helps us leverage continued economic prosperity and affordability that will result in over $10 million in private commitments via the inclusion plan for micro-local businesses, micro-local business enterprises, as well as our continued support of the cannabis industry and the support of the cannabis manager. I'd also like to highlight additional funding for our Neighborhood Leadership Academy, $50,000, as well as the increased allocation for neighborhood-based organization and community organizations of $335,000. This is over a 25% increase in the level of funding that they received over the previous fiscal years. We'll also continue our efforts to make sure that we're more engaged and connected as a community. You'll see $42,000 budgeted for bilingual communications during the upcoming election. We have doubled the funding for language access and interpretation services, as well as continued funding for broadband connectivity, particularly in our public spaces and parks. This budget is also responsive to our priorities around health and environment. You see the work around funding, the continued work around climate action and adaption plan, as well as the electrification of certain carbon emitting vehicles in our fleet. The budget also continues to improve the level of parks, over $4 million to increase our parks maintenance, thanks to the millage. We continue the work of our outdoor and free summer camps for youth, as well as other youth programming activities. I also like to call your attention to the $1.5 million for the Martin Luther King Park Lodge and other community improvements in our park system. This budget also is responsible to ensure that we continue the work on the lead service line replacement, almost $8 million allocated for that, as well as converting additional households in our systems from wells to the city's water system. We also continue the work on our lead hazard program, over $1.8 million to make sure that we address lead-based paint in certain households, and that continues to fund our position, our lead program specialists, that allows us to do that important work. This budget also continues to focus on mobility, over almost $2 million for sidewalk programs. We continue our trail investment and our vision to make sure that we have zero pedestrian accidents, and we have over $40 million in Neighborhoods of Focus based transportation solution pilot. We will be rolling out a pilot for car share. We've done the bike share, we've done scooter share, we'll be rolling out car share, and we will be doing that in our Neighborhoods of Focus who are more transit challenged and other programs. This continues the free service of the Dash Mobility Program as well. And I'll close with a summary of our five-by-five forecasts. Again, this is a responsive budget based on our projected income and property tax revenue. As you'll see, we are balanced in '23 and '24. We are concerned about the future, as these ARPA funds are one-time and not necessarily recurring, and will need to make sure that we continue to evaluate our revenue sources and adjust for expenditures as needed in future adopted budgets. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Before I go any further, I'd like to give our interpreter an opportunity to make known the availability of interpretation services. She's here. He's here.
Hi. Good evening. We are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment. Buenas noches. Estamos complacidos de proveer servicios de interpretación en español esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieran proveer comentario público.
If there's anybody in need of interpretation services, if you could please let us know as well. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open things up for, to hear, see if any of my colleagues on the dais, fellow commissioners, have any comments or questions for City Manager before we open things up for public comment. Colleagues?
Thank you, President Jones. Thanks for the presentation. I just have a few questions. Going back to the training partners piece as it related to the GVSU-sponsored academy, City Manager, this is a type, topic that has been discussed both at Public Safety and, as well as our fiscal committee, and the continued need to, as we evaluate our practices in the light of the killing of Patrick Laia, how are we connected to those training partners? I know, I think that was in our first meeting, the chief talked a little bit about that, but we've also talked about a relationship with GRCC as it relates to that partners, and knowing that we've made investments in the Grand Rapids Promise, and that population and pool who are going to GRCC are going to continue to reflect our population in Grand Rapids. So that's one of my questions, so less about the investment, about how that plays out. The next is another item related to our processes as it relates to FOIA's. We've heard, some of us have received some information probably over the last couple of months, but most recently, the last couple of weeks as it relates, and I know Chief Winstrom, who I can't see if he's in here right now, related to the process and the time, and so I know that that has been a consideration. I know that was something that he discussed in one of his early interviews. That's also something related to our Hillary Hein study prior to my time on the commission as we look to make investments in, in different roles that might be non-sworn. My second question is around the mobility, or my third question is around the mobility piece as it relates to the car share program, which I think is a continued, not only a mobility investment, but also as it relates to our desires around climate change and climate adaptation, and the personal choices that we all have, as well as the significant costs associated with owning a vehicle. Will we be looking at that throughout the year of how much a demand that is for the car share as it relates to the micro-mobility, and then also as it relates to the investment in the Dash, which is, again, not solely just us? And then, my last question is around appreciate the investment in SAFE, and I think the shootings that occurred over the weekend, as well as some that were not resulting in any harmed individuals or anybody being shot, but in some of our other corridors in our ward. President Jones reflects that continued need for investment in our community-based groups that have trust and understanding in different places that we may not have. So I wanted to ask not only what, what that would look like as we go into the next year, and I don't know, if you could confirm when the chief was going to update on some of those items, I think you might have said that was next week, City Manager, and as it relates to our update for Cure Violence. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So with respect to the question about GRCC, we will endeavor to be even more deliberate in the partnership with the new allocation of funding that is being proposed for the Oversight Office and make sure that that is community-engaged and informed, and see if we can make better connections with GRCC in developing training for law enforcement and de-escalation. And so I think it's the intersection of, of both the Oversight Office, community, and GRCC, of course, and we'll still work with, with GVSU. With respect to the FOIA, I've talked to the police chief, and I have encouraged either the support of contracting out resources for, to assist in that, or converting any additional staffing that he might have, and he's looking at what those options are, as well as talking with our city attorney's office to assist with, with that process. On the mobility car share program, I think you're exactly right. We want to look at the intersection and how this affects demand, particularly with the Dash, but the good thing about this, this will be outside of, primarily outside of the areas in which the Dash operates, because it's mainly where there, there's a higher transit need, and it's not being provided, but we'll continue to look at that, as well as the other micro-mobility services and the impact on Dash ridership, and then determine how sustainable that, that may be. And with respect to public safety and update on some of the issues, yes, the police chief will be speaking to that at the next Public Safety Committee meeting, which is scheduled next Tuesday afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, if I can, can I get a motion real quick to combine our scheduled public hearings with our general public comment agenda tonight?
So vote.
Support.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right. Very good. Motion carries. Comments, again, for colleagues, any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Lanier.
Thank you. I'm having a challenging time seeing the audience, and I suspect that they're having a challenging time seeing us. Mr. Chair, do you mind directing the audience to be seated so that all persons in the chambers can?
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, can you please be seated so that the folks behind you can, can look, can see us, and we can see them as well? Out of respect to those who are here, again, everyone's here with the desire to potentially speak or be heard, and would ask that you would, if you're standing, if you could please take your seat.
So, so I have a few questions and comments. Thank you, City Manager, for the overview. I appreciate the chief's plan to come back to public hearing with an update. However, this body had some questions when they presented back on the third, the budget proposal, so I'm hoping that the chief will then come back here to this body, the full body, to provide updates to some of the questions that surfaced during the, the meeting that we had on the third, and I'm happy to remind everyone of what those questions were, at least the ones that I had, if, should you have the need to hear those again. But I want to just highlight a few things. I am appreciative of the number of community investments that are outlined in this proposed budget. I do believe that with some of the allocations, that we should make some amendments to them, City Manager, and one of which is the SAFE Task Force. I think that the types of programs that we have heard from the community that is desired to address some of the issues that we are experiencing currently, are existing recommendations within the SAFE Task Force's recommendations, and I think that it would provide the opportunity for those programs to be funded really quickly through SAFE, so I'm looking for an increase there of maybe $50,000. And then I am also appreciative of the reinstatement of the Third Ward Equity Fund, and as you know, City Manager, and as this body knows, that the, the data from the Economic Development Department suggests that the Third Ward has been underfunded for quite some time, and as a result, the Third Ward Equity Fund was advocated and established a few years back, and so I would like to see that increase, because I think that what the Third Ward Equity Fund was able to do that has been a challenge for the participatory budget process is disperse those dollars more rapidly, and so I am seeking an increase to the Third Ward Equity Fund to the $1 million mark from the 750 that's being proposed. In addition to that, I think that there have been a number of, of police and community relations, suggestions, and questions that I feel that we need to take as much time as possible, or to move as quickly as possible, I should say, to vet the cost for these things, because I suspect that if we were to implement some of the suggestions and recommendations that are coming from law enforcement, as well as the community, that it will impact the budget, and I don't know what's the best way to, and obviously, we can amend the budget going forward, but there are such, at least the ones that I have, my list is now up to 33 of some of those items that, City Manager, I've been sharing with you, even shared here on the dais, so I just want to make sure that we're mindful of those things as we are going through this process. And I think that is the last point that I would want to make this evening, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will have staff confirm, but I think a large number of the questions that were asked on the third also were submitted in written responses, all confirmed, to make sure we responded to all the questions that you asked relative to, this dais is asked relative to public safety, and confirm that whatever remains, we'll either follow up in writing or at our next city commission meeting. Heard and noted on the SAFE Task Force, I think we have funding allocated in the categories the commission has prioritized for violence reduction that can be adjusted from, from that, and as well as I noted your request for the enhancement of Third Ward Equity Fund, and we'll continue to look at those recommendations that have been made over the years as part of the various reviews and studies, to make sure that we have, the chief in his review, his 60-day review, has a chance to review what has been done, also share his plans, and then let us know the additional, any, any resources needed moving forward.
City Manager, colleagues, anything? Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, I'll just say some of the things, Commissioner Jones. I just want to say to the City Manager, thanks, there is some, there are a number of things in this budget that I personally dreamed of for a long time, and had a lot of First Ward residents articulate to me as priorities for them, fully funded Cure Violence. When I first got elected, there was no Office of Oversight and Public Accountability, and there's further investment there, a co-response model, a homelessness coordinator and a homelessness outreach team. Those things didn't exist in '27. Massive investment in affordable housing. This participatory budgeting project is, as difficult as it has been to roll out, is something that I think is, is a value that's incredibly important to, to me and to the residents of the First Ward. The revolving loan fund that's going to be for Neighborhoods of Focus, and in a extraordinary emphasis on climate justice in this budget is encouraging to me, as well as language access, and so those are things that I dreamed of when I decided to get involved in this, and I'm, and it's exciting to see them, those dreams becoming fully funded and, and real. So I just want to affirm those things and say, thank you for the significant investment in all those areas.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Connor, anything? No? At this time, we will invite members of the public to provide comments on either or both, either or both items scheduled for public hearing, along with any general public comment. Each individual will have up to three minutes total. If you're speaking on an item scheduled for public hearing, please indicate that during your comment. The standing rules apply to all individuals addressing the commission. Any individual that does not follow the standing rules may indeed be ejected from the meeting and may be subject to criminal penalty for disrupting a public meeting or trespass. If we're unable to conduct our business due to disturbance, we will recess the meeting and attempt to regain order. If we're unable to regain order in the chamber, we will determine the necessary next steps and make an announcement at that time. So you have three minutes.
Thank you. As a lifelong resident of Grand Rapids that currently lives in the Riverside Gardens neighborhood, I think this is an extraordinarily well-balanced budget. I would like to point out that the only reason the city is in such a positive financial position in the aftermath of COVID is directly due to the responsible handling of the Grand Rapids finances, not only last year, but the year before that, and the year before that. This budget solidly This budget solidly follows the precedent of responsible spending. Thank you very much for your effort in crafting this fair, necessary, and responsible budget as well as for your time and dedication for serving the city.
Thank you very much. For the next speaker, if you could please provide your name and the city in which you reside.
My name is Carrie Jones. I live in Grand Rapids. I spoke last week also. I am a military veteran. I've also been an accountant for over 20 years. I hold multiple degrees, which I obtained, graduating summa cum laude with a 4.0. I understand how to research and look up things and, and figure out what's going on in this city. And I've been watching the last eight years that I've lived here, what's happening. I've read through your budget, and while a lot of the numbers look really good that you want to invest, I also see the realities of what's happening. Last week, I sat here while you voted to add more money for GRPD to purchase more vehicles and for more surveillance. And then yesterday, I sat in Veterans Park at 6:00 PM by myself, a female, sitting at the fountain alone. Just for reference, I printed a map. In green are the streets around Veterans Park. In yellow are the sidewalks in Veterans Park. In red is the path that a GRPD SUV took on the sidewalk to drive next to me, sitting by myself, in an attempt to intimidate, to drive next to me when there was nobody else in the park and absolutely no reason for them to be there on a sidewalk, driving, while two other GRPD vehicles were driving on Fulton toward Division at the same time. No lights, no sirens, nothing going on. But they drove on a sidewalk in the park right next to me, which, by the way, is a violation of the law. Michigan Administrative Code R 28.1448, Rule 448, driving on the sidewalk prohibited. The driver of a vehicle shall not drive on or within any sidewalk area except at a driveway. So I'd like to know why my tax dollars are paying for a GRPD vehicle to drive on a sidewalk past a lone woman sitting by herself in an attempt to intimidate.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Josh Lunger. I'm a resident of the City of Grand Rapids, and I also serve as the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Grand Rapids Chamber. I'm here to support the proposed fiscal plan. I want to thank you and the city staff for the intentionality that went into balancing the necessary response to critical community needs and the long-term commitment to the city strategic plan, which represents our shared values and priorities and importantly produces measurable outcomes towards equitable opportunities and economic growth for all. It also takes meaningful steps towards addressing key issues that the community is struggling with that have been brought into full focus due to the tragic death of Patrick Leoya. Building consensus is never easy. I think we all know how hard it is to reach compromises, especially when things are more emotional and more trauma-focused than we would wish. But I know a lot of care and heart went into the budget before you. It can be hard to appreciate the full scope of the strategic investments, the high-quality essential services and infrastructure, and fiscal sustainability that this budget encompasses. But I want to highlight a few things that I really appreciate, and I think some have just echoed here tonight. Housing is one of our core focuses. It's one of our greatest community needs. This city has been doing a lot of best practices over the last several years, some of the zoning changes you all have approved. And now leaning into the Affordable Housing Fund represents an awesome opportunity to do something meaningful for our community. The continued support of the homeless outreach team, the homeless coordinator position is a critical resource, and we appreciate that you're continuing to do that best practice. The murders and gun violence that occurred in the last week unfortunately aren't out of the norm, and it further highlights that the importance of the violence reduction work, but also the public safety work that, that is encompassed in this budget. This includes programs such as Cure Violence, Crime Prevention Program, and Mental Health Co-Response, the intentional inclusive recruitment to return our public safety staff to full, full force, and the tailoring outreach to address specific types of crimes. And then lastly, you know, accelerating the police reform and oversight with the investment in the OPA, community-informed training, and other community engagement opportunities is important. So again, I want to thank you for the service you provide residents and businesses. I've had the opportunity to discuss this budget with many of our downtown and greater GR employers, and the feedback I've received is very appreciative of your work and the intentionality that's gone into this. I urge you to support it, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lunger. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Sam. I live in the City of Grand Rapids. President Jones, distinguished city commissioners, appointed staff of the City of Grand Rapids. These days, public service sure does require some patience and strength of character. Thank you both, you, you all for your service to our community. My family continues to pray for you and yours. We have a, a great history of extraordinary leadership in Grand Rapids, both public and private, which has resulted in the growing and thriving city that we are fortunate to live in. Our growth and our prospect for future growth requires the need of the services outlined in the very comprehensive budget our city manager has, and his team have presented you with. We support this budget. We support you all and our terrific city manager. We are grateful to and for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Next speaker. Please be heard.
Hello. My name is Nate Johnson, and I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I just wanted to thank you guys all for sharing that information with us earlier, City Manager. I wanted to focus on one particular point. I was reading a little bit about your guys' street lighting improvements that you guys were going to do in the community, and I think that that's a great, great bipartisan choice to be able to do a lot of different things. One, make it safer for people to walk around at night, make it safer for visibility where people walking on the streets, while, while people are driving their vehicles. And then it also has a great economic impact that also has to do with the environment. So installing these lights are, are going to be really cutting down on, on costs for, for electricity, on, on operating the equipment. Replacing the light bulbs is not going to be something that's going to be a regular maintenance item that, that normally happens in, in previous installments. And then rounding out, it, it just provides operation for, for work in the community, bringing people out to, to do those installations and provides value to the community. So that's one point that I wanted to highlight to you guys, and I really appreciate the work you guys have done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Jenny, and I don't reside in Grand Rapids, but I have owned a business in buildings in Grand Rapids for almost 40 years. I want to thank you for just the unbelievable dedication that you've given this city. It's been just really remarkable for all of us to see your unbelievable work that you've done. I'm, I am so thankful for the dedication that you're putting into the homelessness situation. I was one of the founding people of Liz's House in our city when we didn't have shelters for women. And I've been very active in God's Kitchen and a lot of the initiatives in the Hartside neighborhood. And, excuse me.
Excuse me. Please allow her to speak. Thank you.
And, and I think it's really important for all of us to see the complex, the complex issues that we're all facing in today's world and how you put them all together with parks and neighborhood support, the idea of supporting the pools. It's been something I've been involved in for probably 15 years in the city. So kids have a place to go, and I really want to commend the city manager and all of you for the support of the GROW program. Our office has been a beneficiary of hiring some of the youth that you've employed, and I think it's really important that we continue to look at the whole person that we're serving in the city. So thank you for your support. Thanks for your dedication, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seifert. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie, and I just wanted to come here tonight. I'm a resident here in the City of Grand Rapids. I also work here in the City of Grand Rapids, and I just wanted to come and thank you guys for the energy and dedication that you're putting towards this budget and that I support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Michael. I'm a resident, and I also work downtown. We just moved here last year. We've been a nearby resident, came into the downtown area, and quickly appreciated the number of constituencies that the city commission, city mayor, and the city manager need to think through when developing the budget. I had an opportunity to review through the budget, and while I recognize that I don't necessarily agree with all of the line items and exactly the dollar allocations, the breadth of your constituencies, I, I found it very thoughtful, and I appreciated that in a time of housing prices going up, you're able to lower the millage rate, although that is offset somewhat by the increase in the value of the homes. I appreciated the thoughtfulness for, again, the city residents, and I just wanted to share my appreciation for the work that you guys have put into it, especially the city manager getting this all organized, and say thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker.
At the risk of throwing my mother under the bus, I have to bring attention to the fact that she has been driving with an invalid plate and two broken taillights for the past seven months. This is worse than the traffic violation Patrick was executed for. Not only has my mom not been pulled, pulled over, not received a citation, she certainly hasn't been murdered for it. Can anyone guess why? Because my mother is a white woman. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, what to be heard? Please provide your name and the city you live in.
I'm Monroe Suster, and I live in Grand Rapids. Do you have children? Do any of you have daughters? I'm a daughter, a daughter that is fortunate enough to grow up with a dad. Christopher Scher robbed Patrick Leoya's daughters of the opportunity to grow up with their dad. Patrick will never bring his girls to the father-daughter dance. He will never smile as he watches them blow the candles on their 16th birthday cake. He won't be there when they experience their first heartbreak. He will never walk his daughters down the aisle. Christopher Scher stole more than Patrick's life. He took two little girls' dads. When you sit there and shake your heads at us and silence us, know that we are shaking our heads at you for doing nothing about it. Arrest Christopher Scher, justice for Patrick Leoya.
Thank you. Next person to be heard.
My name is Danny White. I'd like to tell y'all, thank y'all for the job that y'all is doing. It's, it's sad for certain stuff to happen in our city, but we do have just due cause for everybody with their backs turned. I feel y'all pain, but we elected these folks up here to do their job.
If you could, yeah. Danny, if you could just address us.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it just, it just, I love what you're doing in the Third Ward. That's where I'm from. A lot of these people I've never saw before in my life for something like this to come down here and people standing there to make us stand for something. We need to start at the beginning. The police is doing the best that they can. If somebody want to do something else, y'all can feel free.
Let him speak.
Y'all can feel free to come down there with me, my man with the dress on.
Let him speak.
You can come down there, and then you can help us stop a lot of other stuff. Don't come here today and do that.
Mr. White, address us, sir.
That's all I'm saying to them. That's, that's it. They have a hard job to do for some of us who can't continue to hold their laughter or, or talk. Let's help us police our own community, and we won't have this. I'm talking to y'all too, though. I ain't shutting nobody down.
Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Commissioners and the police that are in the room. I would love to say again, first of all, my name is Pastor Daniel Scott. I'm a resident of the city for over 30 years. I minister on the Hartside neighborhood, poorest neighborhood of all of Grand Rapids. We've been there for 42 years. First of all, I want to thank you, Commissioners, for, and the police, for the wonderful job you're doing. I know it's not easy. I pray for you every day, not by name, but by groups.
If you could please let Mr. Scott speak.
And I've had a chance to look at your budget and heard what you said today, and I'm here once again, as you know, I've spoken many times, have sought to speak for the unborn in our city, fellow Grand Rapidsians, just as much as anyone else that's in this room. And part of the budget is for the homeless, and I see the homeless almost every day in my ministry. However, I would like to propose that some of these funds be used to assist mothers and fathers that maybe cannot afford to raise that unexpected child, that unwanted child that the mother may be carrying in her womb, so that that child can live and flourish and grow. Use some of that funds to provide housing for them and other services, health services and assistance. And after all, if we help those that are the most helpless, God will bless our whole city. Scripture says that. Scripture says, if you bless the poor, you will be blessed. So I would like to appeal to use some of these funds that I have paid taxes for as well, for the very poor, those that have no voice, like the unborn, and I'm sure God will bless you.
I'm going to ask that you allow Mr. Scott to finish his statement. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Yes. You talked about equity. How much more equity can you have for a life as, as the unborn?
As much as Patrick's?
Yes, even Patrick, but the unborn as well. All life matters. All life matters to the Lord Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ died for everyone, including Patrick, including everyone that's mocking me right now, including the unborn. Jesus Christ died for the whole world, you and I, and if we would all just call upon Him, He will save us, and He will bless this city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Emma. I'm sure you find my face familiar. I want to start out with a quote by Maya Angelou. "In the flush of love's light, we dare to be brave, and suddenly we see that love costs all we are and will ever be; yet it is only love which sets us free." That's but on my heart, and I feel this body has been an utter failure to uphold those values in that quote. From what I've seen from this body, increasingly is fascism. And honestly, it's scaring me. The level of censorship that you feel you're allowed to, to enact on us, and the sneaky way that you're writing the budget so it looks like you're taking money away from the, the police department, but you're really not. So let's give a little context for those, several of my citizens who seem to not really grasp what happened when they spoke about the budget here. So again, the budget, the total budget is $597 million. So taking that into account, anything on the budget that is less than $5 million is less than 1% of the budget. The only other thing that I saw on the budget that is at least $5 million besides the GRPD's budget is homelessness, housing and homelessness, which was only $5 million. So that's 1% of the budget. So if you're saying that's a huge increase, that is 1% of the budget compared to the GRPD budget, which is 34%. So that's 34 times, and, and hundreds times other parts of the budget, but 34 times the housing part of the budget. 51% of that budget is being used on patrol, so meaning... 51% of that budget is being used on patrol, so meaning about 15% of the total GR budget is being used to patrol its citizens. I want that to sink in. And then let's talk about the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability. So the total funds for this year, this coming year, is 1,700, approximately 1,700,000, which again is less than 1% of the total budget. But of that budget alone, only about 700,000 is being used outside of GRPD affiliation. 75K is used in partnership with GRPD, 100K for police training.
Your time is up.
And being used for police training.
Thank you. Thank you, Emma. Next person like to be heard?
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I stay here in the city of GR. First of all, I'd like to say, on Thursday, I went to the Kent County Commission and I asked the Kent County Commissioner, there were 17 commissioners there, that I asked them to drop the charges of the protesters. I asked them to reach out to Christopher Becker and ask him to drop the charges for the protesters. I even talked to Robert Ess who said, ever since they've actually been charged with these charges, they have not went to the county commission, not one time, and asked the county commission to drop those charges. But for some reason, these people, these several activists are taking pictures from my personal Facebook page and cracking jokes when I was there to watch the chief of oath, when I was there to watch the chief of police take oath. Why are you guys taking pictures off of my personal Facebook and talking about me and sharing it and thinking that it's a joke?
Allow him to finish his three minutes.
I'm blocked off of Facebook.
Allow him to finish his three minutes.
I'll wait for my time. I'll wait for the time. I'll wait for my time.
He needs to address the dice.
What's that? Please go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
So, for one, and also, I'm not dropping the charges on the girl who walked around the building where all of the protesters were and put her hands on me. I'm not dropping those charges. I never said a word to her, even when I was upstairs in the city commission, I never said a word to her. She escalated the situation and she started a situation. She put her hands on me. I have nothing to do with the police officers or anybody running into each other when they tried to stop her from getting locked up. Y'all should be, y'all should be, y'all should be getting ahold of her and making sure that y'all contain the people that y'all affiliate with because I have nothing to do with those situations.
I said, allow him to finish his statement.
I'll wait for my time.
Allow him to finish his statement. Allow him to finish his statement. You want your three minutes? Allow him to finish his three minutes. Allow him to finish his three minutes. Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Can I get my couple seconds back?
Mr. Jones, talk to us. Talk to us. Talk to us. Talk to us. Mr. Spicer, it's okay. Mr. Spicer, it's okay. It's okay. Mr. Jones, go ahead. Present to us.
Can I get my few seconds back, please?
Present to us. Please, go ahead. Present to us. Talk to us.
Also, I'm hosting another participatory budgeting process for the third ward. I'm also hosting one for the Hispanic community. I don't know a lick of Spanish, but I know that 5% to 6% of the Hispanic population has not even been involved with the process. I'm actually trying to create solutions for other people, and I don't even understand the language, but I understand the barriers that we face in the community. So for all of these people that keep talking about me, all I keep actually doing is creating solutions.
Mr. Jones, talk to us.
Commission, all I keep doing is creating solutions. I'm not sitting here instigating problems. I'm not starting problems. I am literally trying to give back to the community the best way that I can. And every time I have a problem with somebody, I've never started a problem. Nobody can never name a time that I've attended a protest that I've verbally tried to have a conversation. Not one person except for, can I see your megaphone? That's about the only thing I've asked somebody or can I speak. Anytime I've had a situation or a problem with somebody, they started it with me and then when I happened to, when I handle it my way, then I'm the bad guy and I got at least five to 10 people on my head about it. All I'm asking is for the same respect that I do because I am literally creating, I am literally creating workshops and events to help the community through this process so we can get past the traumatic times that are going on because it all trickles down to economics. Now, I'm not going to say anything to nobody else. I've been doing my work. Please stop taking pictures off my personal Facebook and trying to diss me because y'all won't like how it really happened in the streets.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Nick Dobkowski and I'm a resident of the second ward. I do agree that there seems to be lots of good things in the budget and there's an extra $3.5 million that we could use to make it even better, and that's from the police budget. The current, oh, it's 34.6% or 34.8%, the difference between 55.8 million dollars and 32% is $3.5 million. And there's, I don't think you need ideas on how to use that money, but there's lots of them. Because last year, budget was 55.8 million dollars. This year, it's 55.7 million dollars proposed and the coverage has been about, oh, it's a $130,000 decrease to the police budget. That is 0% of the police budget. And there, I don't know what other context there is where you pay someone to do a job and they, through their failure of duty, kill someone, Patrick Leoya, and you say, you don't say you're fired. They, you fire people who do things like that. So to say, oh, we will give them the exact same amount of money that they had last year and we will say, oh, do better, is not sufficient. There is a way that we can hold the police accountable to the reforms that they say that they want, and it is through money. We can say, we are going to take away this money until you show us, not just say that you'll do these things or go through trainings, but that your actions make a difference, that you do something different than you did before. That has not been our experience. So I am asking you to amend budget, specifically the police budget, to 32% of the general operating fund and use that money for something else. And I ask the commissioners to vote no if that does not happen. Like we've said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of other things that are allocated funds in this process, in the budget, that are worthy causes and we could do better. And those things, if you vote no, those things will most likely stay there, but there can be some real additional change if we're brave enough to do it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next person like to be heard?
My name is Andrew and I live and work in Grand Rapids. As is evident, there's a lot of concern over the contents of the budget, particularly pertaining to the funding of the GRPD. The tragic death of Patrick Leoya is terrible and I hope that our city never has to experience anything like this ever again. I know a lot of people are frustrated and want to see funding stripped or reduced from the GRPD. The concern that I have is there have been other cities that have been in this position recently, you know, over the last year. And my concern is that when I've seen what's happened there, when they've reduced their police funding, it seems like it negatively impacts disproportionately the communities that they were intended to help. So my concern is that the same thing could happen here and I would encourage us to find an effective way to help those communities because from what I've seen, it seems like they disproportionately and negatively impact those communities when this happens. So I support the budget the way it is and I encourage you to do the same.
Thank you, sir. Next person like to be heard?
Hello, my name is Lou. I'm from the third ward. The speaker before me just stated that the police are meant to serve, what he intended to say, I think, was black and brown communities. However, that's not. They started as, policing started as slave patrols, so please disregard his opinion on that. I came up here because I wanted to speak about the city's budget. I was coming up here a couple weeks ago, however, the meeting had been shut down. Last year, per public record, Christopher Scher made, pardon, in 2020, Christopher Scher had made $89,554 as a Grand Rapids police officer due to inflation and the annual percentage that you get to, their pay raise incentive that you get for working for the government. He's well over 90K this year. He's still on paid leave by GRPD and that's deeply concerning because that's our tax dollars. Let me just reiterate to the community before me and my neighbors, the money from the city budget comes from 23% income tax, so that's our money, 11% property tax, again, our money, 12% from state revenue and grants, so part of that is our money and the rest of it's for the people, meaning us. And then 39% comes from charges and services that we likely pay in, think our water, our trash and everything else. And then 5% in tickets, great, court costs, things of that nature. And then 5% is unspecified. So then when we break it down even more and you guys are proposing that now we drop the police budget to 34%, even though that's still a fiscal increase, that's deeply concerning. So another speaker before me had brought up the hot team in Repert. You had brought up the hot team. The hot team is one social worker in a group of police officers. You're giving 5% of the city's budget to the unhoused population? That's incredibly low compared to the 34% that you're choosing to give to GRPD, which GRPD only harasses and brutalizes the unhoused population. And we know this. The first public commenter brought up how GRPD ran through the grass or over the sidewalk. They do that regularly at Hartside Park at dusk to remove any of the unhoused neighbors who attempt to sleep there. That's where our tax dollars are going. We just did a review of where that money comes from and it's ours and it's for us and this is where the city is choosing to put it. And that deeply needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person like to be heard?
I'm Kai. I don't know what ward I live in because it doesn't really matter. I've been a resident of Grand Rapids for over 30 years. I want to talk first about the housing. That's a joke, okay? My landlord just tried to illegally evict us so that he could up the rent by double, okay? And then I called almost 60 landlords because wow, now I'm going to be homeless with my two kids, right? Because this landlord wants more money for absolutely no reason at all. And each landlord told me they either didn't have anything or their two-bedroom apartments in Grand Rapids were 1,200 to 1,500 a month. Those were private landlords. When I called regular apartment complexes, they were the same and I had to make over three times the rent. I don't. So there, I was close to homelessness, but unfortunately, I have an amazing group of people around me who pointed me in all the directions and saved the day because now I get to keep my lease because he was wrong in doing so in the first place. Another thing I want to talk about is the fact that you guys give more money to patrol than you do to train these officers? No wonder they kill. No wonder they kill, right? Because they don't have enough training to patrol safely, right? They shouldn't be stalking us at all. When I broke down the $56 million budget for their 5% training or 5% patrolling, AKA stalking of black and brown people, and 2% for training, that equated to five, or sorry, $2.2 million for patrolling and 1.1 million, or I'm sorry, 2.8 for patrolling and 1.1 for training. Does that make sense to any of y'all? You can nod, shake, no, unbiased, you don't care because your communities aren't stalked, right? It's insane that you believe they need more, they need more money for patrolling than My wife went for dental assisting and got more training than all of your officers. Where does that make sense? More money for stalking than you do training, which makes sense because they only get 594 hours of training. They get shot with a taser that they're clearly scared to death of, right? Because then they execute people for having, allegedly having, the already twice-discharged taser. Just imagine had you trained him more. Just imagine had you trained him more. Patrick Leoya's daughters would have a dad. Come Father's Day, they'd be able to celebrate him. But because your officers got more money for patrolling than they did for training, you licensed them to kill.
Thank you.
So fuck you all.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next person like to be heard?
My name is Kristin from the second ward. I'm here today to talk about bricks and not the ones that were in your yards, although your yards have my thoughts and prayers. I am here to talk about the bricks that we put in the backpacks of our black community and we expect them to, we expect to save them. Don't talk back. Don't get angry. Say yes, ma'am. Say no, sir. Don't fight, even if they hit you first. Do your best. Do better than your best. Keep your hands out of your pockets. Don't look them in the eye. Don't challenge anyone. Don't put your manhood before your life. Just get home safe. Don't walk alone. Don't walk with too many people. Don't walk toward the police. Don't walk away from the police. Don't put on your hood. Put some more bricks in the backpack. As they continue to grow, we add more and just, they need to understand they're a threat. The degrees are not a shield. Your job is not a shield. Your salary makes you a target. Your car makes you a target. Your house in your nice neighborhood makes you a target. Don't put your ego before your safety. Don't look them in the eye. And to carry this load breaks into their backs and we just keep piling more bricks and more bricks, but when is this going to stop? My husband is black. My son is black. My cousins, nieces, nephews, I fear for them daily when they walk or drive the streets of Grand Rapids. We need answers. This policeman is still on paid leave, on vacation with our tax dollars and it needs to end. It needs to end now. These comments need to be questioned and answered so we can get things accomplished. Comments aren't doing any good. There's a line of people that want to make comments, but nobody gets any answers ever from the commission. When can that happen? And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next person wishes to be heard?
Hi, I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. I was hoping to talk to Mayor Bliss about this, but I wanted to talk about decorum. We've been giving you decorum for years now, telling you that somebody was going to die by the hands of GRPD. And Bliss wants to act upset and give us an attitude because we're cursing about the death of a community member. It just doesn't sit right with me and it shows that you don't really respect us or what we've been saying for years. Another thing I want to address is, again, what some of my other community members have mentioned, of Christopher Scher still being on paid leave. That sends a message to all police officers that they can get away with this and they can keep brutalizing communities. And, you know, to have no action done for over a month now, to not be questioned, to not, you know, it makes me lose faith in the system, not that I really had any to begin with. I'm a little shaky. I don't really like public speaking, but I feel like I need to. And we're not going to see positive change in communities until all these services that you throw crumbs at are being funded more than GRPD because crime has been increasing alongside with the budget of GRPD. So just without even crunching the numbers that a lot of my community members have, it's kind of obvious that they aren't really helping any of the situation. And, you know, we're, I don't really expect anything out of this comment, but we're going to keep coming here. We're going to keep being in the streets until we reach our goals. We're not going to go anywhere. We're not going to be intimidated by anybody. And that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you.
See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Next person wishes to be heard?
Hello, my name is Kristin. I'm from the first ward. I'll... Someone is speaking. Please do not interrupt. Someone is speaking. I'll... How'll, uh, how'll that really keep this short since I heard you guys had an eventful night? I just want to start off by saying that as a Hispanic community member, we don't need help from people like him. We don't. We don't need help from people like you either, especially fake Hispanic peoples like Isasi over here. We don't need your help. We don't need your community, community, our conversations. We don't need any of that. What we need is more money for our communities. And what we can do by that is taking that, that little bit of, little bit of money that you, you took away from the budget and...
Allow, allow, allow Christian to please speak. Thank you. Go ahead, Christian.
The little money that we took from the budget take a lot more out. Take a lot more out, like millions of dollars. Like, I don't know, the nine million dollars you proposed, I don't know, the past two years that we've come up here and talked to you guys, and invest that in the communities of marginalized communities that continue to be oppressed by the police department every day. What the past speaker just said, by saying the budget goes up and the crime goes up, how does that work? How do you guys as professionals, especially Mark Washington, who's not even from here, he's from a whole different city, who was hired in, was hired in, and gets paid almost three thousand dollars? How do you say as a professional, you go, that makes sense? There's more violence, and with that came with an increase in police budget over the past couple of years. Let's increase it more. Let's increase it more. How does that, how does that make sense? How does that make any sense? How is crime going up, and you're, you're, you look at the past couple of years of you increasing the police budget and going, yeah, we should do that again. That's definitely helping. We need more community policing initiatives, community policing, not, not police officers in our community. We need social workers. We need healthcare workers. We need people who can deal with mental health crises. Because I'm tired of seeing my people, because it's none of your people, I don't care if you're from here. You sit up on a high pedestal with your power, and you sit here, and you act all, all, all like you're, you're the highest person in this room because you're a city commissioner. I'm from here. I was born here. I was, lived here all twenty-two years of my life, and nothing has changed. The community is still scared of the police. The community does not believe in you. The people who elected you are those white people who came up here and said, I love your budget. I love your, it's great. It's great. It's awesome. Because they don't know what goes on in our communities. You guys are frauds. All of you are fired. And one day, I'm going to have your seat. I'm going to get elected to your seat, and I'm actually going to create change in this fucking city. So I'm sick of it. I'm sick of watching all of you sit up here and make so much money. I mean, you don't make that much money, but make it, make all this power and, and act all, be all, all like you're higher than everybody because you're a city commissioner when you've done nothing for the city of Grand Rapids. Nothing. Take it from a community member who's lived here all life. We don't need your help. We don't need his help. We need anybody's help. We need the community's help. Because who protects us? The community does. Not you guys. Not these two pigs right here. None.
Sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next person wants to be heard?
Hi, my name is Claudia. I'm a resident of the Third, of the Second Ward, but I work every day in the Third Ward. I've been a social worker for about three years, working with children and families in various bachelor-level positions. Words cannot express how important this city is to me. I was educated at Aquinas College. I have degrees in political science, Spanish, and community leadership, which was formed by George Hartwell, the former mayor of Grand Rapids. My friends live here. My mentors live here. My family lives here, and the people I work with live here. I am here at this meeting as a private citizen, as is my right outlined in the Open Meetings Act of the Michigan State Legislature. Mayor Bliss is not here, but I am concerned with Mayor Bliss's comments earlier this week in, to MLive, about the fact that disruptions in this meeting will mean that these meetings will cease to be public. Kent County, city commissioners did the same thing when COSACHA, a local Hispanic-led organization, began protesting Kent County contracts with ICE. And it just seemed very similar to reasons that they used to keep those meetings out of the public eye. I care about democracy. That's why I'm here. It's no secret that many threats are facing our city. Just over last weekend, we had three instances of gun violence resulting in two deaths. These shootings occurred in East Town, at businesses that both myself and my younger brother are around frequently. He's also a second, of the Second Ward. I know that if I were at these locations when the shootings occurred, I could have called the GRPD with the confidence that their arrival would probably optimize my safety. But that's only because I have never had to be coached by my mom on how to monitor my interactions with the police, like the resident who was just up here talking about what she's had to go through with her boys. I have never had to be scared of the police due to the color of my skin, the language I speak, or my citizenship status. And I've worked with many people who have, who live in fear every day of being deported from here, because they want to be here. They want to work here. They care about Grand Rapids, just like everybody else in this room who has come to this meeting to make sure you guys are voting for us, because you are elected for us. On Monday, Mayor Lori Lightfoot of Chicago instilled a weak on curfew for minors in response to the death by gun violence of a sixteen-year-old child. We can stand here and say, well, that's Chicago, not Grand Rapids, but that's just not true. Chicago is used as a model of how laws and policies have helped perpetuate gun violence, inequality of opportunity, and negative health outcomes for communities of color in our country. I'm really worried that our city could be headed to this point if we don't rethink how we can allocate city funds to address issues that we are facing. We need to be a city that invests in preventative measures instead of reactive ones. One of the most important things that's important to address is investing in children at risk of turning to violence and crime because they don't feel valued, protected, and supported by their communities, particularly the police. Summer is almost here, and the reality is that there will be hundreds of children and teens who may not have supervision during the day due to adults' work schedules. After the pandemic, the average cost of daycare in Kent County rose to three-hundred-and-seventy dollars a week per child. For context, if a parent is making fifteen dollars an hour at forty hours per week, that would mean they would have to allocate sixty-one percent of their monthly income on childcare alone to make sure their children are supervised. Only five percent of daycare-aged children are getting state assistance for daycare.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're going to have problems here.
May I begin? My name is John Williamson. I've lived in Grand Rapids for eighteen years. I have listened from the mountains. I am ashamed of all of you! I am ashamed of the blood on your hands that I'm paying for! I am ashamed of Chief Winstrom! I am ashamed that my dollars are paying ninety thousand dollars to a man who executed a man in the street for not having the right license plate! Are you kidding me? Is this Grand Rapids? Is this Grand Rapids, Michigan? What year is it? Where's this investigation? Will it ever end? Because my dollars are in that man's pocket for shooting a man? I got two minutes left. For shooting a man? I'm still, you're still giving him my money, chief? You're giving him my money? Why is this...
You can address us, sir. You can address us.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commission, if you would consider speaking to the chief of police about the murder of Patrick Leoya, I would greatly appreciate it. I am here to talk about one thing: Patrick Leoya, Patrick Leoya, Patrick Leoya. Not the budget, not any thank yous for y'all. You ought to be ashamed that you have been so impotent to protect the most vulnerable. Patrick Leoya was a paragon of virtue. Patrick Leoya taught the kids to dance. What the fuck are we even doing here? Excuse me, I'm sorry about the language. It's my first time speaking at one of these meetings. I've had a lot on my chest, you know? The death of Patrick Leoya in my neighborhood, the southeast end of Grand Rapids. I live by that Walgreens. You know that Walgreens? That's where they killed him. Why don't we send a police out, one man at a time? Jeez Louise, you know? Jeez Louise. He was just, Patrick didn't reach, Patrick didn't, Patrick didn't do anything wrong! Nothing! Nothing wrong! And if you will not indict him now, charge him now, if this investiga, I investigate it, it took me about that long, just like everybody else in this world. Patrick will never be forgotten, and your role in the negligent care of this community will never be forgotten. There are some of you commissioners I have faith in. Some of you I trust. But how have we failed so terribly? Where are the support for these protesters? Who is going to thank the brave people who come in front of these murderous cops, far as I can tell, they think their job is to execute men for having the wrong license plate? Was it even a traffic stop? Or was it a parked car? End the investigation. Charge the man, indict the man, so that the family can finally have a sense that there is some shred of justice in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson.
Justice for Patrick!
Hello, my name is Ally. I've lived here my entire life, and I am a community activist. It's been thirty-nine days since Officer Christopher Scher pinned Patrick Leoya to the ground and pressed his gun directly against his head and shot him. That single gunshot not only took Patrick's life, but it also took a piece of his family and his loved ones with him. Last week, I watched as one of Patrick's loved ones walked out on this meeting because it was too painful to watch, because you were all too busy tone policing our rightful anger. And it's crazy, because when this first happened, it was thoughts and prayers for the family. Y'all stood over that man's body at his funeral and sat in the pulpit. You heard their cries, and you're, yet you're worried about profanity? I don't know about you, but the word fuck is a lot less worse than a black woman crying for her firstborn son. I will never un-hear that. It's to the point where y'all are willing to arrest community members while you continue to let the man that caused this walk free? So far, two meetings have been shut down, not because of the lack of decorum, not because of the interruptions or the profanity, but due to the lack of a spine of every one of y'all. Life must be so difficult for y'all to, to have to hear the consequences, not of your actions, but of your inaction. Because once again, we have been coming here for two years, telling you exactly what's going to happen. I literally stood here back in September and said, the GRPD is eventually going to kill someone, and it's going to be a big issue. That was before Patrick died, almost six months before he died. Yet what was done since then? Absolutely nothing. You're so worried, once again, so worried about tone policing, but not worried about the fact that we literally, over a month ago, watched a black man be executed in our streets over, over a license plate. A man is dead over a license plate, not because he ran from the cop, but because the cop was too weak to actually de-escalate the situation as he should have. He had to kill him. And he really didn't even have to do that, because at that point, Patrick had his hands under him. He posed no threat. When I walked in here, I saw Patrick's family members in distress. People who came to this community for safety are in distress because they no longer feel safe. Patrick's family came here for safety, and he died at the hands of racism in this country. Justice for Patrick Leoya, and fuck GRPD!
Justice for Patrick! Justice for Patrick! Fuck GRPD!
Next person wants to be heard? I'm going to ask you to please, if you're not at the microphone, you, and you've spoken, that's great, but just looking to focus on those who have their three minutes. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Hello, I, my name is Brianna, and I work and live in the city of Grand Rapids. I support the democratic process that's at, being displayed here today. Thank you for everyone for sharing your opinions, and I thank the commission for doing the best they can to do a budget that supports, and as they continue to evaluate what best supports the community as well. I do support the budget that's at hand here, but that's my personal opinion, and I really thank you again for all your hard work, and as you continue to evaluate what's best for everyone, thank you moving forward.
Thank you. Next person likes to be heard, please? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet Zahn. I'm a Grand Rapids resident of the First Ward and co-chair of the Grand Rapids Climate Coalition, which represents more than seventy neighborhood associations, nonprofits, faith groups, businesses, and hundreds of people in this community who really care about how we choose to address climate change. Since we're here to talk about the budget, that's the main thing I definitely want to focus on, but I also want to acknowledge the tremendous amount of trauma that our community is experiencing now. And as someone who has also had a dear friend killed by the police, I, I just want to acknowledge all the pain that is, is present right now. In terms of climate change, I think that the city is, is making some good strides, and I really want to appreciate and say thank you to particularly Commissioner Repart, who has been a strong ally in helping to move things forward. So thank you to you particularly, but to all of the elected officials who voted to declare a climate crisis in our community and make a commitment to carbon, a carbon-neutral goal for the municipality. I think that where I was disappointed in the budget really was in the letter, Mr. Washington, where you started out by saying we've had three, three crises that we're living with, and that is the pandemic, the economic results of that, and the social justice issue, but you did not list the climate crisis, which we just declared to be important. So I just wanted to say that leaving that out of the big picture is a little bit concerning to me, because although our city's doing a lot, we need to do a lot more. If we were to take some of the money that goes to policing our community and devote it to a green revolving fund, where we would be able to allow the neighborhoods of focus, the BIPOC communities, businesses to take green initiatives for themselves, you know, being able to address climate change in a powerful and independent way, I think that would be a great way to add to the existing climate programs that you already have put in place. We'll never meet the equity goals that we have stated in this community without a strong and really robust approach to dealing with climate change, because so much of the inequity we experience is about climate as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next person wishes to speak?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm, my name is Viola, and I'm from Grand Rapids. I debated coming here tonight for fear of backlash from this hateful, violent movement, but I have been troubled...
Allow her to speak. Please allow her to speak. She has the microphone. She has the microphone.
But I have been troubled as I watched my city move in the wrong direction and spin out of control. I refuse to be intimidated by this movement and their attempt to shut down my voice that does not agree with their thinking. Solomon, king of Israel, the wisest man that ever lived, penned, "With all you're getting, get understanding." There is an anti-authority movement that has swept across this nation, bringing destruction and chaos. Fathers, truth, and our police have been its target. Its mission is to remove authority at all levels. The removal of values, morals, borders, and standards...
Please allow her to finish. Thank you.
You see, when you remove authority from a home, you destroy the family. When you remove authority from a nation, you decimate a culture. And when you remove authority from our police, you loose evil on our streets. Ladies and gentlemen, our city is in crisis. But we don't have a race problem. We don't have a police problem. We have an authority problem.
I ask you to please allow her to finish speaking.
My Bible says that rebellion against authority is dishonorable and brings devastating consequences. Resisting authority brings destruction, corruption, and confusion. Submission to authority brings order, blessing, and honor. If we could just understand that there is a divine protection and blessing you can only get when you respect and submit to authority. We need to stop telling our young people the lie that our police department is against them because of the color of their skin and go back to the days of teaching our kids to respect and obey authority.
You have your opportunity. You have your three minutes momentarily. Allow her to finish.
What we need more than anything is people with courage...
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
...that will stand for righteousness in this hour. We need churches to come together to pray for a move, a wave of unity to sweep across this city. We need to pray for a move of God on the young men that are shooting each other on our streets, and for healing between our police and this community. We need to pray for our city leadership...
Allow her to finish.
...this community, the Grand Rapids Police Department, the family of Patrick Leola, and Officer Christopher Scher, and Officer Christopher Scher, and his family. As we navigate through this devastating event...
If you cannot, if you cannot allow the person to speak, I'm going to recess. If you cannot allow the person to speak, I'm going to recess. If you have an issue with what they're saying, step out of the room, but they have a right to speak. If you cannot, if you cannot, if you cannot hold yourself, if you cannot practice self-control, I'm going to recess.
Above all, we need further prayers... Above all, we need further prayers for our law enforcement as they stand between us and evil.
Your time is up. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Can you please? You know what? Recession. You know what?
How we doing today, everybody? My name is Olabangi Olatunde. So I continue to hear, you know, about, we continue to talk about Jesus Christ. Let's go to the scripture real quick. Revelation 1:14 says, "His head and hairs were white like wool," that's black people here, "as white as snow, and his eyes were as a flame of fire, and his feet like on the fine brass, as if they burned in a furnace." So if we gonna talk about Jesus, are we talking about a pale, blond, Jesus?
Please allow him to speak. Please give him his, please allow him to speak.
Or are we talking about the original Jesus Christ? So if we gonna talk about Jesus, just know that you worship a black man who came out of Ethiopia. That's the Jesus in whom we are talking about. Not Jesus colonizer, not Jesus crooked, or Jesus, I ain't gonna say the other word, you ain't gonna sense in me. But if we gonna talk about Jesus, understand that Jesus was a black man. And if Jesus came here to America today, he wouldn't be going to the so-called white man, but he would be going to the rejected. He would be going to the despised and the downtrodden. He would be going to the so-called African-American. That's first and foremost. Secondly, this isn't a hateful or violent movement. We are the victims of a hateful and violent movement. This is Malcolm talking right here, so if we gonna talk, we gonna talk correct. 400 years couldn't teach us to hate, so nothing possible on this face, on the face of this earth, could teach us to hate. Now I'm gonna take these off because Joe Jones, I know you personally. I worked at the Grand Rapids Urban League as an urban fellow for six years. So those under your leadership were those who taught me. Y'all taught me cultural, culinary arts, agricultural science, financial literacy, dietary nutrition, et cetera. But now that I'm awake, now that I no longer go under a slave name, now that I found myself, through the knowledge yourself, you sold us out. So is Mark Washington, so is your sister, and so has your sister. But it's never too late to stop selling us out, but quit bending over for them and come submit to the will of your people. Stop blacking the blue and black your people. It's time we stand together and police ourselves. It's time we take our dollars and stop giving our tax dollars to you and it's time we start a black tax. Let's police ourselves, let's doctor ourselves. We don't need you to educate us, we'll educate ourselves. So if we continue this cycle of begging you and constantly coming to plead at your feet, we'll never get anything that we want. And again, this isn't a hateful or violent movement, this is, we are the victims of the hateful and violent movement. Black power.
Thank you, sir. Spicer?
Well, thank you for setting up the stage for me. My name is Joseph Spicer, I'm from southeast side of Grand Rapids, been here my whole life. You know, we know each other personally, played football with your son. First thing I want to say is, just for Patrick Leoya, I don't know why this is taking so long to prosecute this guy. If one of us kills somebody, we'll be at least arrested. You know what I mean? If we not charged or indicted, we'll be arrested. He's outside walking around free chilling with his family, doing X, Y, and Z. That's not cool, this man needs to be arrested. But the one thing I've been wanting to address for the past few weeks, but it's been getting shut down because I guess people don't got thick enough skin to sit there and just listen to people get their stuff off real quick. So last, two weeks ago, former Commissioner Mayhew was up here and he said something about the Grand Rapids Civilians Appeals Board. I don't, then Mayor Bliss ain't here, I don't like how she ushered him off at the end of his three minutes. He was the former commissioner, he sat in all y'all's seats before, he did y'all's job, and if he's saying something, people need to listen to. That's former judge, former Commissioner Mayhew. I know him personally, he helped my family, you feel me? So I don't like how she ushered him off, I think he needs an apology from her for that. That's one thing I want to say, but he brought up the civilians appeals board. I looked into the civilians appeals board and I didn't find anybody. I found Sophia Edwards and a few other people, I couldn't find no emails or phone numbers like I could do a few of you, and then even a few of you, I can't find a lot of you phone numbers or emails sometime. So we need to rebuild and rebrand the civilians appeals board. What that is, is when that was for us, so if we have complaints for the police, we get to go to the civilians appeals board instead of complaining to the police. But then there was another interesting stat that I found. The police complain about other police officers more than we complain about them, but the police can't tell on the police, and that's what the civilians appeals board is for. So I think we need to rebuild and refinance or something and do something with civilians appeals board. And instead of talking in these public meetings about the budget and stuff like that, I feel like we should have a, two meetings at least, in the beginning of the month and end of the month, with civilians appeals board and the police and talk about what's happening in the beginning of the month, the crimes and what's going on, and then at the end of the month. Is it going up and is it going down? Is we solving problems or if we not? Because sitting here talking like this, it's not really doing nothing. There's a lot of people that's angry and there's a lot of channelled aggression that not going the right way, and a lot of people really don't care because it's not a lot y'all can really do outside of just say something to somebody else. We're tired of all of that. So, and like Commissioner Mayhew said, that's what the civilians appeals board is for too. The state will not give us subpoena power. So that's why we have to petition through the civilians appeals board and get stuff popping through the laws and stuff like that. That's all I had to say this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. Next person likes to be heard?
I'm sitting on a table because nobody thought to make this accessible by providing a chair. So few of you on this panel are nice, a couple of you. None of you are brave, inutil, ingrainedo, insupportable, insufferable. I don't stand by you. And for the white, thin-skinned, fragile moderates who sing your praises from the comments on Facebook, watching at home at Wood TV, possibly hearing this audience, we know that you have an insatiable lust for black death, but your time is up. "There is no progress without struggle," said the great Frederick Douglass. "Those who claim to love freedom and yet dispose of agitation are men who want crops without plowing up the ground." This struggle may be physical, it may be moral, but it must happen because power conceives nothing without a demand. It never did and it never will. Defund the police. Demands disrupt our expectations of what's acceptable. There is no demand that is not a challenge to your power, a warning as it should be. As you continue to bemoan the death of decorum, let it be known a protest is rarely something for the powerful that they want to hear. It's not meant for you to be comforted. You won't mourn decorum with greater grief, empathy, ferocity, and performance than you do the murder of Patrick Leoya. It's repugnant, it reeks. The GRPD does not need a red cent. However, I recognize that the absolute minimum is 32% and y'all can do that, but apparently that is far from what any of you want to do. But even worse, you continue to try to redirect our taxpayer money into useless trainings that have been chosen empirically to not actually impact the violence that black and brown people experience at their hands because they're a murderous force that was founded within the confines of the slave state. Even worse, in 2016, GRPD had eight weeks of training to prevent racial profiling. In 2017, 11-year-old Honesty Hodges, may she rest, was held at gunpoint. In 2021, city commissioners approved a contract for a training program for GRPD and interacting with LGBTI community. You also gave them an additional $700,000 worth of our budget. And in 2022, they killed Patrick. We paid for all of that training, we paid for y'all to hire more black cops, and they still killed Patrick. Even with a murder investigation going on, GRPD in the last couple of weeks has ripped somebody off their motorbike in the middle of South Division, tackled a cyclist on Fulton with their knees on his back, and attacked a pregnant woman along with a bevy of your constituents at last meeting. Is that decorum? Is a bullet to the brain more respectable than the F-bomb? I don't think so. We don't want to give more money to them. No more OPA, no more trainings, no more prayers, no more politician photo ops, no more token black mouthpieces to pacify my people. Psalm 55:17, "I wish death would take my enemies by surprise. I wish the earth would open and swallow them alive because they planned such terrible things together. I will call to him for help, and the Lord will save me."
Next person likes to be heard? Next person?
I live in the Third Ward. I am asking that the city commission to fund the GRPD down to the required minimum of the charter of 32% and the money be given back to the community and not to the OPA. Contrary to what the chief said, many in the community do want fewer cops on the streets and fewer police murder weapons on the streets. Vulnerable black folks, Latina folks, indigenous folks, and other folks of color have been saying this and have been telling you why that's so necessary, and I want to share what I've learned from them. The problem is broader and deeper than the horrific murder of Patrick Leoya, may he rest in power. A few years ago, I was in the Kent County Jail for a short time after I'd done a civil disobedience action in solidarity with the immigrant community. When I was there, I was in a holding cell with others who deputies said were women, whether or not that was our actual gender. And while we were in that holding cell, the other people and I talked. One mother I'll never forget had been taken in after a routine traffic stop for accumulated fines and fees that had added up. She had just started two new jobs to afford housing and her bills, and she was so excited because she was finally going to catch up. She had been on her way to work when she was pulled over, and because she had no way to get bail, she was afraid she was going to lose her jobs. What's more, as time went by, she shared that she had a son who needed to be picked up from his preschool. The phones in the jail tried to charge the person that you're calling, so nobody would accept her call, and she was frantic, sobbing, as she realized that her son was going to have nobody to pick him up. She was powerless, she was helpless, and she had been put there by the GRPD without any regard for who she had to care for. Another woman was getting processed to do a 30-day sentence, which meant that she would not get the back surgery that she needed in order to return to work to be able to support her children. Every person I was in the holding cell with, once the eyes of the deputies were off of them, and I hesitate to share this, that they cried and sobbed because I don't want to put their vulnerability out there for you, it's not for you. But at the time, it was one of the earliest and most traumatic examples of how the GRPD and policing disrupts the lives of black and brown and poor folks every single day, whether or not they're murdering or shooting at folks. Our neighbors deserve better than armed men patrolling the streets looking for anything they do wrong. I am in solidarity with those in the community who want you to defund the GRPD.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Faith. I am resident of Grand Rapids, have lived here almost my whole life. I don't know who paid those people at the beginning of the meeting to come in.
Please allow her to speak. Thank you.
And I watched two of the women cut in front of the protesters and people of color that have been coming for the last month trying to get heard, and then, and they've been shut down due to swearing. So I would request that there is someone who makes sure that people aren't cutting in line. Common human decency. On the budget, I want to keep it simple. We're in a housing crisis. Defund the police. I may go as even so far as to say abolish the police. Why isn't the mayor here? I hope she's watching this, and if she is, I want to express my disappointment in her and expectation that she does the job she was hired for, a job that has given her power that she is misusing. It's now been five weeks that she has refused to listen to her community when we are in a crisis. When I miss work, I have, the work doesn't go away, I have to make it up. So how is this time going to be made up? If any of you don't agree with shutting down this meeting and tone policing, I hope you make that known to her and publicly. A black man was murdered at the hands of a government official. People are justifiably angry, and they're being silenced because of an arbitrary rule created by people in power. Has Mayor Bliss considered the long history of racial oppression, trauma, and white supremacy that is influencing the anger people are expressing? By silencing the people, you are asking for them to speak louder and take bolder action. The protests have been peaceful. There were 20 cops outside of this meeting last week. The protests have been peaceful. Why was that necessary? That is exacerbating things. That is making people angrier. I've found the more you ignore someone, the more aggressive they can become. At least that's what I see on the dating apps. Do you want to be a part of further disenfranchising marginalized community? Because that's what's happening. Please reach out to the young activists in our community and ask, and consider holding listening sessions with these people and their supporters. Three minutes every other week is not enough, and you're not even giving them that.
Thank you. Thank you. Next person who wishes to be heard?
My name is Nyar Tamanga. I am 13 years old. I've lived in Grand Rapids almost my whole life. I'm gonna say it again, I'm 13 years old. All of you are adults, adults, right? You can drive, you can drink, you can vote. I don't have that. When I asked my mom if I could be dropped off here, her response was, "Is it safe? Is it safe?" You know, we had someone come up here and talk, "Don't teach our children to disobey those who are protecting us." I don't see them protecting me. If you want to talk about those protecting me, I look to those who are standing right now because my trust isn't in them. I don't trust any of you, I don't trust any of the police officers because you have shown time and time again that we cannot trust you. I go to City High Middle School, just voted the top high school, top high school in the state. You know what they teach us? Teach us to speak up for yourself. We're IB learners, right? We're smart? None of you are smart? None of you can recognize murderers? You can identify that there is a problem, but you cannot fix it. I don't know much about the law again, I'm young, but I'm pretty sure an accomplice to a murder should be arrested, and right now, all of you sitting and doing nothing are accomplices to a murder.
Please, please refrain from the, there's no commentary. If you could let her finish.
I am sorry, they are fine, I'm still allowing to speak.
Please, go ahead.
I am frustrated, and frustrated can't even begin how absolutely terrified I am to live here. I'm expected, I'm expected to raise my kids here, I'm expected to go outside and walk my five-year-old little brother? God forbid we look too scary. God forbid he accidentally is wearing his hood and we get the police called on us because we are window shopping to go steal later. I'm not, I don't want to keep coming here. Trust me, this is not how I want to spend my night. I don't want to come here. I don't want to sit here and I don't want to have to beg you to stop killing people? That's not what I want to do. I have friends, I have other things that I could be doing, and I'm sitting in front of a group of adults who think murder is okay. You can't sit here and tell me you don't think murder is okay because you're allowing it to happen. If you want to talk about God, you want to talk about Jesus, I'm a Christian. I don't know what God, some of these people believe in, but it sure ain't mine. I have never read in the Bible where he said, "We should allow the people who are supposed to be protecting us, kill us." I'm sorry, maybe I missed that scripture, though. I'm not, I don't want to do this. I don't want to do this. Please, please, do not make me sit here and scream another name. Do not sit here and make me beg, and God forbid that name is mine. God forbid that name is any of these people, God forbid. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please. Thank you. Please, if you could, please refrain from, from the clapping, please. Go ahead, ma'am. Please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Grace. I know of an amazing young woman who has seemed to do more for justice for Patrick Leoya than all of you have. We have had protests at our school. She is doing stuff like this, standing up here in front of you when she is 13 years old. We have homework to do. I have IB tests coming up that I need to prepare for, and I am sitting here through this whole meeting, I am going to protest, because it seems like you can't get anything done. I have better ways to spend my time, but I will rather spend it here than sitting at home and pretending like none of this is happening. People can sit behind screens and say whatever they want, say that they support you and that all lives matter, but I don't see them out here protesting. I don't see them out here speaking their truth, and when they do, they say lies. They say that we are sharing our opinions. We have been sharing facts. I honestly don't even know what to say anymore. I don't know how else to get this through to your heads that we care. There are youth in this community that seem to care more than you. We have little say in this community, and this is what we do get to say. This is the time, we get three minutes. So here's how I'm going to spend the rest of my time. Justice for Patrick Leoya. Defund GRPD. 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 I also want to say to the cop in the crowd and over here, cop, please look us in our eyes. We are the people you are serving, and you are looking down at the ground, you are pretending to write in your notebook, you are checking your phones. These people looking at you right now are looking at you for a reason. Look them in the eyes. These are the people you are serving, and you cannot look at them in the eyes. You kill their people, and you cannot look them in your eyes. You ask us for respect to not swear at you, to not yell at you, when you give us no respect when you kill us on the streets.
Thank you. Next speaker, please quit.
Excuse me, Eric Brown, lifelong 3rd Ward resident. Just want to read to you guys a few things from your own literature. Oops, and of course, there we go. Vision: Grand Rapids will be nationally recognized as an equitable, welcoming, innovative, and collaborative city with a robust economy, safe and healthy community, and opportunity for high quality of life for all. Our mission: to elevate qual, the quality of life through excellent city services. Those are from our strategic plan. And then this is the, a quote on equity. And again, in our documents. Racial equity, racial inequality, excuse me, have been baked into government, and racial inequalities across all indicators for success are deep and pervasive. We also know that other groups of people are still marginalized, including based on gender, sexual orientation, ability, and age, to name but a few. Focusing on racial, racial equity provides the opportunity to introduce a framework, tools, and resources that can also be applied to other areas of marginalization. Those are just from our strategic plan documents. I, I just leave there because I, I disagree with a former person I'm speaking at you guys. We do have a race problem. Any, any, any country that has in its founding documents three-fifths of a person and still has not been addressed and, and been taken care of appropriately, and that has not repented for the, for the sin of racism, we have a race problem. So, again, leading with my comments with that, I just want to urge you guys to reconsider your budget and to see where there are areas that you may be able to reallocate resources towards those, towards those root causes that lead to what we might think are reasons for extra policing. Things like more affordable housing, things that come in to, to reduce poverty, to increase businesses for marginalized individuals, and such the like. You guys know the things that I'm talking about. It's been, it was reported earlier that there's room within the budget, in particularly the policing budget, that where there's, whatever the dollar figures are or the percentages, I won't rehash those, you guys are very familiar with those. So that, that might be an area where we can look to reallocate some of those funds. I'll just remind you guys that the Hillary Heinz Report of 2019 said that the policing department was adequately staffed at 297 sworn officers at that time. So, not quite sure where we are with staffing right now, but we were, we seem to be fully, fully, fully employed at that time. So let's think about that as we're looking at staffing going forward, to make sure that if, if an external consultant are saying that, hey, we have adequate staffing, let's, let's look at that. Within that report, you guys are reminded that there are several recommendations of how we can maybe make some changes around staffing. Oh, man, that time went quick. Changes around staffing. So I'll just say, look at that report, look at those recommendations. I'm going to end with this. I do ask those in, that are in charge of the city negotiation with the police union, because we know that current negotiations are going on now, those that are in charge of those, make those open negotiations from the city. That's a, that's a request to the city, as well as to police, the union officials.
Your time is up. Thank you.
How's it going tonight? This is for my first time talking on one of these things. Please don't shout me down, guys. I work at one of the locations that was one of the three shootings this week, weekend. There's a bullet that went through the business. It passed within about a foot of a coworker and a friend of mine, and it went through where my girlfriend usually sits. Luckily, I had bronchitis this weekend. That scares the death out of me. I don't know, can you guys write a, a doctor's note that says for like, you know, excuse because of, you know, terrorism or whatever? I don't know what that is, just shootings into random buildings. Scared the shit out of me. I don't know if I'm comfortable to go to work this weekend, and it scares me. So yeah, that's all I wanted to come talk about tonight, and I just wanted that to be a thing. Like, I just want to work. Where I was there today just to kind of help my work get back on. I agree with a lot of people in this room on their ideologies about anti-authoritarianism. I've dealt with GRPD. I actually was arrested once, and the cop was corrupt. The two cops were corrupt, and the case got thrown out because they stole money from me, then they lied about it in the police report, and so my lawyer was able to do that. But I think that everybody needs to learn to have love in their hearts, and seeing that gentleman who just wanted to preach his beliefs about pro-life and Jesus Christ, you should never shout down somebody who's just saying what they want to say. And you should let people talk, and it just, it just made, it almost made me cry seeing like what this is. And I see a lot of bravery in this room, and I think that the three police officers are all very brave sitting here right now. I think that...
Please let them finish. Please let them finish.
I think, I think that what happened to Patrick was a tragedy, and I, I think it's terrible. I, we've all been to funerals. Everyone in this room, nobody in this room wants to see, go to a funeral. Nobody does. Nobody wants to go cry over a casket. Nobody's happy about it.
Please let them finish. Please.
I just don't want to get shot at my job. That's it. And I pay taxes, and that's it. I think that's a pretty simple thing to ask. And also, as far as politicians are concerned, half, half of politicians are probably corrupt too, just like half the cops are probably corrupt. You know, it's, nobody's perfect. I just, I, I mean, I don't, I'm like screaming in the wind right here. This is like literally the most pointless thing I ever did. So...
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Libby. I live in East Towns, the 2nd Ward. I've lived there most of my life, was born there. First of all, I want to say I'm disappointed that you separated the comment time this week. I came the last two meetings to speak on the murder of Patrick Leoya and was not capable of doing so because the meeting was shut down. And there was a budget issue, the fees for trash only being raised 15 cents, but that means that in 10 years that we've had the cart systems, you have almost doubled the price of a tip for trash. And I'm actually getting worse service now than I was back then. I'm, I get skipped all the time. But anyways, so I'm disappointed in that. It's been over a month now since Patrick Leoya was shot down in the middle of a Grand Rapids street. I'm angry because I know a retreat, routine traffic stop should not end with the death of a young man. I grieve for the Leoya family. I wonder how they can ever feel safe here now. How can any of us? I'm confused, and I'm frankly a little bit upset that the police department has barricades around it, as if protecting the police and the building from us, the residents of Grand Rapids. We are not the people that are shooting the police in the back of the head. They're shooting us. Where's our protection? Where are our barricades from this heavily armed group of people that have no, have seemingly no consequences for their behavior? The, the protection that we do need is going to have to come in the form of systematic changes to the way the police are trained and allowed to operate and the powers they are given. Police are humans. They are not infallible. They are not. We are told that it's okay for them to hold young brown and black children at gunpoint. It's part of their training when they use excessive force. When pulling over a young man for rolling through a stop sign? You know, I, I guess I don't know what the police, what they're supposed to do. If this is what they do on a daily basis several times over, what are they supposed to do? We deserve better than this. You, as residents of Grand Rapids, deserve better than this. I have little doubt what the prosecutor will do in this case. I don't have any hope that he's going to press charges. And unfortunately, that means it's up to you guys to find a way to get this man off of our police force, because none of us want this man to come to our home or our neighborhood. We don't. We deserve better than that. And I know that it's tricky with the union and everything. Muskigan was able to somehow get rid of one of their cops, the KKK cop. I don't know if any of you remember that. Maybe you could call them up and ask them how to do it. Unfortunately, they had to give him his benefits. But please, find a way to protect us the way you're protecting Monroe 1 Center.
Thank you. Next person would like to be heard?
My name is Kiran. I've lived in the 2nd Ward for nine years now, and I continue to be disappointed in all of you. I am the child of an immigrant. However, I have never feared for my father's safety in this country, because he is a white, English-speaking, middle-class man. I've never worried that when I get home, my dad might not be there. This is first and foremost a race issue. We have a major health crisis in Grand Rapids, and it is our racist police force and our racist city officials. I request we get justice for Patrick Leoya. I suggest that we defund GRPD down to the minimum 32%. I demand that we fire and arrest Christopher Schur. We want release of the full unedited video of the murder of Patrick Leoya. You need to remove Chris Becker from the case and make the police get their own liability insurance. We hear stories of nurses going to jail for accidentally giving people the wrong medication. A civil servant effing up. We have a perfect example in front of us of a police officer effing up in the most above and beyond way possible, killing somebody. If we can't hold people accountable for keeping us safe, or in this case, actually actively pursuing us and shooting us down, then how are we to have any sort of city, any sort of community that feels safe and heard by the people we put in positions of power? Right now, we can't. That's why we're all here and will continue to be here, because we don't feel safe in our own homes. We don't feel safe in Veterans Park, playing with children, drawing with sidewalk chalk, because police cruisers might just pull up over the sidewalk at any point, where a friend of ours might be lying down, taking a rest, where a child might run out in front of them at any moment. There's no safety in that. There's no safety in the way that we run our city right now. Like I said, defund GRPD down to the minimum 32%. We don't need to push through the 34, or whatever percent it is that you guys want right now. We want that money back in our community. It's our money to begin with. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
Thank you. Next person would like to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Hicks, and I really wanted to be able to talk about issues affecting most of the people on the South Side, week after week. However, I just really would like you all to know, not even a week ago, my daughter's best friend, who's Latina, so Melinda, you should care about this, was assaulted by her partner, and she was bit by someone, her partner, and she was frantic. She came to my home, and she needed assistance. She said, who should I call? Should I call the police? My last time that I was assaulted, my neighbor was the one that helped me. Not 911. My neighbor, a young black woman who interrupted violence. Bless her soul. But anyways, my daughter's best friend, you know, wanted guidance, so I recommended that she go to the hospital, because I didn't really think the police could help her. And I said, you can always call the police later, because they're there to just document what happened to you. Okay. So she went to the hospital, and she got assistance, and then they came home. This was on a Saturday at 4:00 AM, and they called the police department. It's on record. And they waited for two hours, and the poor girl thought it was okay to use my address. I was sleeping in my bed, because I didn't know when they were coming back from the hospital. But when you protest the police and someone at your address needs assistance, they're not coming. They don't ever come, even when women are being assaulted in vehicles. That's the last time I called was a few years ago, and I had a mentally ill man sitting in my living room. Sinaita Lier, he was sitting in my living room having a nervous breakdown, okay? Because someone was getting assaulted in front of my house, and there was nothing I could do. This is traumatizing. The therapist I had no longer exists, because someone at Mercy Health was too busy scraping funds from the Southwest side of the community. But Melinda, if you weren't too busy, you know, teaching people about how to make a buck, maybe you'd care about their mental health, you know, or return my phone call.
Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Please quit.
I just want to read something real quick, and while I'm reading, I want you to think about it and let it sink in. And this was written in 1963. "You only watch the news to find out where the fires are burning, which way the wind is blowing, and whether it'll rain. Forecast ahead back first. A mother's boy laid out in the street for hours. These facts don't wash away. Nothing has changed in, changed in 60 years. There, there's no justice for all these stolen lives."
Thank you. Next person would like to be heard?
Hi, my name is Megan. I'm from the 2nd Ward. I wasn't planning on coming up here to speak, but after that horrible woman that claimed racism doesn't exist, I had to say something. Guess what? I've resisted arrest before. I have physically fought a police officer, and I'm here to tell this story. So it... tell the story, so, that's all I really need to say. Why am I still standing here in front of you today? Because I'm not a black man.
Thank you. Next person would like to be heard?
Hello, first of all, justice for Patrick, defund the GRPD. My name is Samantha, and I currently live in the 1st Ward. First of all, first comment is you really need to monitor your Facebook comments, because the comments that you're getting on YouTube and Facebook are more violent than us cursing here at the City Commission meeting. That goes for the news outlets as well. Second of all, some people here don't know what happened at the beginning of this meeting, but you all just decided to combine the two open comment periods, excuse me, so people can only speak one time for three minutes, instead of three minutes on the budget and three minutes open comment. That was really sneaky, and that was wrong.
Please let her finish, go ahead, ma'am.
So, so, "I've been organizing along young black activists for years in this city. Most painful was the summer of 2020 following George Floyd's murder. We organized every single day for months, and for what? We protested, we marched, we fundraised, we emailed, we showed up here, we researched, we called in here, we engaged in civil disobedience, we marched, we held press releases, we did all these things to tell you that this was going to happen here in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and we were right. You didn't listen, you were wrong." Sorry. "The timeliness of this murder is interesting, as Grand Rapids hosted for the first time the National Forum for Black Public Administrators the weekend before Patrick was murdered. During the conference, Washington held a workshop on appreciating and adapting to societal attention. How dare you toot your own horn and say that you handled community concerns following the murder of George Floyd and offered the community opportunities to voice our opinions and be heard? You didn't hear us. Also during that conference session, you complained that there were not enough applications for the reallocated funds in the participatory budgeting process." I'm talking to you. "You made a mockery of activists in the city, and you said those that are the loudest in this community are not those who speak for the community. Wrong. We were right, and you were wrong. I'm ashamed and embarrassed to be a young black public administrator in this city. I care a lot about this city. I continue to show up and fight for this city, even though I'm not standing right here. During the past two years of protests, you dismiss queer black organizers saying that we have an agenda, you dismiss young black organizers saying we don't know what we're talking about, and you continue to dismiss the concerns raised from the black community at large. Let me be clear, we're demanding justice for Patrick, and we're demanding that the police be defunded." Dang, I only have 20 seconds, hold up. If GRPD can afford to pay, sorry, if the GRPD can afford to pay a murdering officer who executed someone who they were supposed to protect and serve, they can afford to be defunded. We've asked for two years that the GRPD's budget be lowered to the charter-mandated 32% minimum, because we're sick of our tax dollars going to pay a murderer. We're paying for his lunch, we're paying for his mortgage, we're paying for his car payment.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say hello, because I don't care about welcoming any of you. I don't live in the city anymore, I mean, he's a fake name, my name is Bob. I moved out of Grand Rapids because I was brutalized by a police officer in Grand Rapids. I moved all the way to California because he assaulted me with his friends, and I found out this year that it was recorded and he put it on the internet. He's part of GRPD, he wears this uniform. This is your officer, Mark Washington, this is your employee. Chief Winstrom, this is your employee. We all know about GRPD, we've been telling you about GRPD. You talk about this budget, talk about money coming to the community. Everybody in here talks about taxpaying dollars going to it. Well, I'm going to talk to you for someone that was homeless for seven years. I don't care about your tax money. People deserve to be protected. I don't care if my tax dollars go to it, I'm a human being. The human beings out on the streets, that GRPD throws away their stuff when they get sick of seeing them, or when we know that the DeVos and the Van Andos are going to go to a concert and they throw them away from Van Andel. Patrick was a human being. I don't care that Chris Scher has a family, Patrick had a family. You're talking about throwing money towards the beautification of the city, and you don't even clean the city, none of you even come out to city cleaning, what are you talking about? You guys talk a lot of big game for people that are so inactive on actually being there. None of you have even visited the people in the community that had this happen, where Patrick was murdered, none of you have even talked to the people there that are traumatized. You're all just sitting here. Mindy, when we went to recess two weeks ago, you sat and talked with me. I asked you last time to sit and talk with me, and you got up and you left. Mark Washington, you gave me some fake answer of, oh, well. You have a choice, we have a choice, we all have jobs, we all have mental illnesses, we all have whatever, and we make choices to be here. We are tired, just like y'all are tired of whatever anger or decorum or whatever that we have, we're tired of being scared of GRPD. We're tired of money that can go to actual resources and actual accountability and actual things that can benefit the community, go to police officers that don't need it. We have an up-armored vehicle, mind you, I'm an Army vet, we have an up-armored vehicle that we know, we all know that we have, that's just sitting there, that we don't even use. Sell that if you want money. Sell that and actually put it back towards the community, and not towards these officers that are fine. Justice for Patrick.
Thank you. Next person would like to be heard?
So I don't typically speak in public, especially in forums like these where I feel like you're not hearing us, you're not making any changes that are meaningful to our community, and I don't know what those other people were talking about when they got up here, stating that they felt like they were not safe, when they put the targets on their back when they get up here and speak the shit that they speak. And now, as far as the trauma, that's a big topic here today, I just find it very interesting that Sanita Lanier got up on stage at Ottawa Hills High School and felt it appropriate to bring up my father, Roderick Dantzler, to trauma bond with the audience, speaking on something that she didn't experience. So, I'll talk about it now, since it's something that's going to be in the headlines like they do every year on July 7th, it's been almost 11 years that this has happened to my family. That's probably the only thing that's ever happened in Grand Rapids that called for police action. We don't need y'all in our neighborhoods, on the Southeast Side where I grew up, in the 3rd Ward. But y'all feel it important and necessary to continue to police, brutalize, traumatize our communities, in order to protect the white, wealthy, DeVos, Van Andel, Meyer families. We don't have that same protection, we have each other, that's all we have. And it's just disgusting to me that y'all come to these meetings every week, look down at y'all notepads, chew gum, don't look us in the eyes, on your phones, and just seem very uninterested in what we have to say. Nothing of what we said is new. Defund GRPD, justice for Patrick Leoya, we need to allocate those funds to mental health. And I also don't appreciate that every week, every day that we have an event for Patrick, we have WZZM, Will TV8, who then come up and follow up with news articles, making us out to be the aggressors, to be angry when we have every right to be. And it just speaks to the racism and who they report for, for the white, wealthy men, women of Grand Rapids, Michigan, as far as what's going on in our city, and not something that's just happening to the people on the Southeast Side. This is something that's been a long time coming, it's nothing new, so we need change, and it's just clear that y'all are not the ones that's going to bring it, so we're going to have to do something about it.
Thank you, your time is up, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing and public comment section, and we are adjourned, thank you.